Okay, we'll reconvene the regular Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance, we just said it. Are there any additional agenda consent calendar items? Seeing none, we'll move on to delegations. I know why most of you are here. Remember, we have a five-minute time limit on people. Again, if someone has spoken about what you've said, you can just go and say, "I just want to, you know, agree," or whatever, or that, it's up to you. But five minutes. And we are going to have a presentation by the Animal Control Officer and Assistant Animal Control Officer as the first thing after we get past some of the just easy things to get through. So we put it way at the beginning of the agenda for that. And we have scheduled for the 28th of July, a Thursday, at seven o'clock. We have someone from DEEP coming in to talk on this issue as well and talk about ways with some suggestions. So, anyway. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Board? Okay. Just, obviously, Anne, and you know the drill. Your name, address?
Anne Thurlow, 80th Smith Street. And I'm here as a resident, not as a zoning board member. We're all familiar with the influx of coyotes downtown in the surrounding area. But I just wanted to come and say that I think the current thinking of not relocating them until they become aggressive is not only irresponsible, but totally unacceptable. That kind of policy didn't work so well last month in Massachusetts when a man was just walking through a shopping area texting on his phone. One jumped out from under a car and bit him in a leg. It didn't work so well in Dallas when a lady put her toddler on the front porch for just two seconds, ran inside, came back out, and a coyote had his head in its mouth. That kind of thinking didn't work so well in Huntington Beach when a coyote attacked a little toddler right in front of a lot of adults. And I'll give you this when I'm finished. The residents who ... We pay a premium to live down here downtown for the privilege of being able to walk to movie theaters, the beaches, but you can't do that anymore in a leisurely fashion. You're either taking an air horn with you. I ran into a lady last night with a three-to-four-foot stick. She won't walk without it now. If you're not doing that, you're constantly looking between bushes and fences because you know they dart in and out all the time. You can't even use a fenced-in patio area and let your pet run free in the fenced area because coyotes can easily jump before a six-foot fence. The quality of life is just not the same. These coyotes are out all hours of the day. It's not just at night. I've seen them up at CVS at 3:30 in the afternoon. The lady that owns the frame shop, they're there in the morning when she opens up. And I just feel like in the summer, we have boaters coming now. They're bringing their boats back. We have guests at bed and breakfasts that take walks. We have all kinds of people on vacation that really don't have any clue. They need to be educated before they come to Nyandik on how to react if they run into a coyote. From my house, I live by a right-of-way to a beach on the Nyandik River. I see moms pushing babies in strollers and maybe their toddler's running 10 or 20 foot ahead to get to the water, and they have no clue that's one of the main paths of the coyotes coming to town and back. Personally, I live in an older house. It has no back door. It has two front doors. There have been several nights when I need to take the dog out one last time late at night. And I have the choice of either blowing my air horn to scare it away and waking up half the neighborhood, or just trying to stay awake and wait till it goes away so I can take the dog out. One of my neighbors has had a much scarier encounter. I'll let her tell you about that if she feels comfortable. I think it's a really great goal to want to protect all these beautiful animals, but I really think you should protect the citizens first. And thank you for your time, and I look forward to this illustrious group of people coming up with the solution. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Going once? Okay, come on. Okay, you're next, sir. Your name and address, please.
Anne York, 86th Smith Street. The coyotes seem to have a den right on the adjoining property to mine, which is a house that's been there for probably 20 years, and it's deserted, and all kinds of animals, and I don't know what else, live in there. But the coyote did come after my dog in my yard, and I don't like it at all. It's not fair for me to not be able to let my dog out in the yard. It's my property that I just got assessed for another $5,000 for, and I'm not happy about it. And I think the town should do something about these coyotes all over the place. It's not safe. It's not safe for kids. It's not safe for dogs, and it's not fair for the people that live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name's James McClure. I live at 5 Faulkner Drive. Apologies for being disheveled. I just had a baby about three days ago.
Congratulations.
Yeah, which is actually the reason I'm here, because I too have coyotes going right in and out of my yard. I live right off Black Point. It is very concerning. I don't think that a policy ... And I say this as an animal lover. I have two dogs. I have cats. I've had all animals. I love them to death. I don't want to see the coyotes hurt, but I don't want to see my cat hurt either. And it's very frightening to have to deal with this right now. And I don't want to have to be proactive myself. I think it's definitely something the town can address. I don't have a solution for you, or I would offer it, but I'm willing to help find that solution in any way I can. So, thanks.
Ma'am, are you ready to come up? I didn't know. It looks like you were getting ready to get up before I asked.
Jean Montzouris, 80th Smith Street. I have a little history of having a dog killed six years ago by a coyote. And two months ago, I had my dog chased, or chased coyote through my yard. And I had her on a long leash, and she went up through the woods, and I chased after her because I wasn't going to lose another dog. And it's really, really hard to go through this again, and I don't want to. And I will say that there are things that we can do, and I understand there are people on both sides of the story, you know? We all love animals. We have dogs. We have whatever. But I really feel like there's something that we're not doing appropriately. We have people coming here in bed and breakfasts that don't know about the coyotes. I just, I'm just really disappointed that nothing's been done yet.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Dottie?
It's my birthday tonight.
Happy birthday, Dot. Happy birthday.
You can imagine why I'm here, because of the coyote invasion. And for me, do coyotes pay taxes? Okay? My taxes went up $700 this year with the mill rate going down. And I'm happy to pay it for appropriations as we just withheld. However, my daughter's dog, I can't even put out in my own yard. This is not a German Shepherd eating a squirrel in my backyard, 42 Smith Avenue. I cannot let this dog out on a long leash in my yard that I'm paying $6,000 per year for. And I brought what I wear when I take the dog out. And please imagine a leash with a small dog. And if I'm down doing what I have to do to pick up after the dog, which we all try to do, and the dog is an easy prey for the coyote to come get, and I can't do anything. I get up. I had blown this horn four days ago at Smith Avenue to a coyote that didn't even care about the air horn, I'm sorry to say, because I believe they are smart animals, which that's my concern. So, air horn equals noise equals no hurt. I don't know how long these are going to help us. After that coyote went through Jim Frazier's yard and Sue Brinkman's yard, which is on Morton Street. I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned about the town in this. And the coyote is a nuisance animal, but it's wild, and that's the key word, wild. And is there something, if you're a teacher, if you look at a picture and you say, "What's wrong with this picture?" We have our dogs on a leash, and a coyote is walking by, not on a leash. So, I don't want to be too little too late. I think something's going to happen. I don't want to predict, but I don't want to say. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lisa Steinberg. I live at 22 York Avenue. And this year has been the craziest year with coyotes. I've been in my house for 20 years, and I see them daily a couple times across, right across my yard, morning, noon, and night. And I don't know what the solution is, and I'll also say I'm an animal lover, too. But to see these coyotes, if we have a dog here, it has to have rabies. It has to have a license. It has to be on a leash. So for these wild animals to ... They really have taken over downtown. And like I said, I've been in my house for 20 years, and this is the first year I'm seeing what's going on now. And I think it's dangerous. I don't have a squirrel around anywhere in my yard. And they get hungry enough, they are going to go for anything. There's a couple that are very frequent around. One is very unhealthy. It looks mangy. It's skinny. It's, so it's, you know, exposing other animals in the neighborhood to the unknown. So I, again, don't know what the solution is, but I think it's a good time to have this meeting and have some idea of the long-plan action because they're having pups, and they're going to be a part of the community here. I know some people said we force them out because of building, but they have no predators here. And it used to be wolves. People used to shoot them in the old days if they were on their land, and I don't want to see them shot. But I think it is something to give thought to for the town because we, in my neighborhood, it's a lot of tourists walking through, looking at the houses, and they have no idea. They could be walking at night, their dog, and there's a coyote right across from them. So, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we're going to move on. And right now, we're going to have our ACO. An ACO come up and give a little discussion on, you know, and here again, this is not, according to state statute, this is not an animal control officer. We're supposed to notify DEEP. I talked to the chief today, and I've talked to Rob, our ACO, in the past. We've had no complaint. We, Town Hall, the Police Department Dispatch does get calls about the dogs, the coyotes being out and about. We do get that a lot. But he said that there's been no report of any aggressive behavior on part of humans or anything like that, to just the calls and obviously the pictures of them with, you know, squirrels and rabbits and so forth. We've all seen that and so forth like that. Rob, I'll let you go.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman, Board of Selectmen. First, I want to say I empathize with everybody here, and I agree with most of what you're saying. You need to understand that I am the dogs and cats guy. I deal with domestic animals. The First Selectmen explained it's the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection that deals with wild animal issues such as coyotes. There are times when myself and my assistant deal with wild animals. If there's a question of rabies, we go out and we remove that animal from the ecosystem so he can't spread the disease to other animals. So we look for signs of an animal appearing drunk or an animal showing aggression towards humans. If we see any of that behavior, that's when we become concerned and we can take some action. But for the most part, our hands are tied. I am not a DEB officer. I am not a nuisance wildlife control company. We can't go out and trap wild animals. That is an option that some people might want to take up. In the state of Connecticut, it's legal to hunt and trap coyotes 365 days a year. So you guys can contact what's called the Nuisance Wildlife Control Company. They can come out and set traps, or they can shoot the animal, but they cannot relocate them anywhere else. It's state statute because coyotes are a rabies vector species. We can't catch them in your yard and bring them out to the state forest. It's illegal. So the only option is for the animal to die. The problem with that is once that animal dies, it creates a vacuum, and then another coyote comes in because they're territorial. So the thing that's keeping other coyotes out of your neighborhood are the ones you have here now. Part of the thing about eastern coyotes, some of them are solitary. They act alone. But some of them are pack animals. So if you have one coyote walking around down here, we get rid of him, who's to say it's not a pack of three or four that's going to come in and going to be more emboldened? You don't know. It's nature. I understand what you're saying about your cats and your small dogs and we're afraid about the children, but as a branch of the government, without a statute that allows us to do something or a regulation and ordinance, a rule of some sort, my hands are tied. I know next, at the end of the month, we have a presentation by the state DEP guy, who's much more knowledgeable about this topic than I am. But unfortunately, he's probably going to tell you a lot of the same things. Now, I saw you shaking your head. You contacted the Nuisance Wildlife Control Company, and they ...
They wouldn't come.
They wouldn't come out? Did they tell you why?
He said, "I don't track coyotes."
Oh, okay.
And I said, "Well, keep me to something. It's on my property."
Yeah.
Not on anyone else's property. He said, "I'm sorry, it's my entourage. It's a call by the DEP. He told me a call."
Yeah.
I said, "Well, my sister-in-law's already talked to them. I need them all to town, so, you know, our agents are talking."
I know there are more than one. I don't know which one you called. There are more than one.
I know she's got the county.
If you look in the phone book under pest control, you'll see a couple of different companies. You might have some luck having contacted some different ones.
Does the Board have any questions? Any questions for our ACO?
Yes. Are there, are there any state regulations in place that would assist our Board in trying to take action?
Not that I'm aware of. The DEP guy that's coming in at the end of the month might have additional information. Like I said, I'm sorry, but I'm really the dogs and cats guy. I know, like I said, it's, you can hunt them and trap them 365 days a year. So if, whether it's a private citizen or a town wanted to hire somebody to do that, that's a possibility. That's an option. But then, like I said, that's going to open up a vacuum, and another one's going to come in.
If several of the residents in the downtown area put out traps and were able to trap them, what would they do with them?
The animal would have to be euthanized.
But who would they call to have the animal? There's a, would they call somebody at the state level or state DEP to come and actually remove the animal if it was trapped?
The state's probably not going to come remove an animal that you trapped on your own property with your own trap. They're probably not going to do that. So that citizen would have to figure out how to humanely euthanize the animal on their own.
Well, that would be very difficult for a local homeowner.
You're probably right. That's why I'm really surprised to hear that the Nuisance Wildlife Control Company wouldn't entertain helping her.
Well, do you have any other suggestions that you could offer, especially to the Board, about other communities that are having this problem that might have some suggestions to assist us?
Coyotes are not new to our state. They're in every town in this state. So this is a problem that everyone's having. And it is springtime now, so they're all very active out looking for food to feed their young. So, I don't really have a lot of answers. Maybe put some signs up. I know there was concern about people from out of town coming in and not realizing maybe some signage. I know people have mentioned the air horn thing. Coyotes typically don't like light and loud noises. A healthy coyote should not pose a danger to humans. It will certainly pose a danger to your cat if it's out left unattended, or your small dog if he's 20 feet away on an extendable retractable leash. They will see that as an opportunity to come in and grab that. Unfortunately, that's a coyote doing what comes natural to them, to try to feed their family.
Okay, can we, we're not allowed, we're going to kind of take care of that in a minute, but let the Board ask first, and then I'm going to say something along those. If you could ask a question, what would you ask? So, you'll see, right? Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Yes, ma'am.
So I was going to ask, they're saying that they've been around, one person said for 20 years. Do you know why there have been this increase in coyotes at this time?
I do not. I know there's been a lot, an increase in a lot of wildlife. We see bears around here now. We haven't seen that in quite a while. I've heard, and the state denies it, but I've heard that we have mountain lions in the area. I'm still waiting to see photographic evidence of that, but we have a lot of wildlife in this area that now, because their territory is shrinking, the forests are shrinking, they're coming out more into the populated areas. And unfortunately, too, there's a lot of easy food sources. People put bird feeders out. Bird feeders attract the squirrels. The squirrels attract the coyotes. People let their cats out and put food outside for their cats, and that attracts the coyotes. So I don't, I don't have all the answers.
And this is something, on the 28th, we hope to be able to do a lot more education, as well as giving you the opportunity. That'll be a much better opportunity for the give and take, as well as the questions and so forth.
I did put some information from the state website about coyotes and dealing, living with coyotes over on the table, but that's information that's available on the state website.
So, could you tell us, have you, have you, have you had numerous calls asking for assistance?
I have had people contact me and say they've seen coyotes in their neighborhood and what can we do about it? And unfortunately, my answer is you have to contact the state or contact a nuisance wildlife control company to come and deal with it because there's no statute that allows me to do anything. I kind of bend the rules when it comes to rabies, and I remove those animals from the ecosystem because that is a public health issue. We've got to take that out when we see it so it doesn't spread to other animals because rabies is 100% fatal to everything if it's not treated in time. So when we see something that we think is rabies, we take action on that. But just a coyote walking through the neighborhood, that's, there's nothing in the law that allows me to do that. And because I'm a branch of the government, I have to have something that allows me to do that. Now, there's a law that says nuisance wildlife control people can trap them and take care of it. There's a law that says you can hire a hunter to come out and take care of it. But I would discourage people from taking that into their own hands and just randomly trying to shoot the animals because you're responsible for every projectile that would come out of that gun. So if it goes through the coyote and hits a bus full of children, you own that, regardless of how afraid of the coyote you were. That's why that's best left to the professionals who work for wildlife control companies. Yes, sir?
Dan?
Are you aware of any, are there been any studies on repellents that are effective for coyotes?
I am not. I know they sell coyote urine repellent to repel other animals from your yard, you know, rabbits and deer from eating your gardens. I'm not aware of anything that they sell that would repel coyotes.
Bill, you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, Anne?
Yeah, Rob. Just a question. Well, first of all, I know you are also speaking on the 28th of July.
Yes.
After the presentation given by the volunteer conservationist for DEEP, so that's great. And we'll have questions and answers then. But if you could pick, like, your top three suggestions for folks with dogs or cats, in particular, dogs, you know, because they tend, they spend more time outside, they need to be walked, what would those be, if I could ask you?
So I live in Montville on Fire Street, which is really a wooded area. We have coyotes all over the place. So my advice to people would be turn on your outside lights before you go outside and stand in the window or the doorway and look to see if you see anything. And make noise when you go out. Loud talking, your air horn's a great idea. Keep your dog on a short leash, not a long leash where he can go off 20 feet from you. And stay in the lighted area if it's dark out and make noise. Talk to your dog, sing, yell. The coyotes, that should scare them away, if it's a healthy animal. If it's a sick animal, that's a whole different story. So I know somebody mentioned something about people getting bitten by coyotes. I'm not familiar with those events, but if I had to guess, I would say that animal was sick. There was something wrong with them to go after, after humans. That's not normal coyote behavior.
And that definitely called the police on you.
Oh, absolutely. If you see an animal that looks drunk, because rabies is a neurological disease that affects the brain like alcohol. I'm sure maybe two or three of us in this room have been to a party where somebody's so drunk they can't function. They're falling down on themselves. They can't get up and walk away. If you see that, then you should definitely call the police. If you see an animal that's showing aggression towards humans, by all means, call us, and we can come out and see if we can find it. That's definitely something we'd want to, want to come and look for.
Dan?
I would just, I do have, and it's probably not my role here, but I do have a suggestion for what it's worth, because I'm concerned where I live with the coyotes as well. What I did was I purchased some of these motion detector LED lights that come on if you get within 20 feet of it. And I put them around the perimeter of my property. And so when I put my dog out, if I see that light signal or come on, then I know I have to be looking for some movement in the animal.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the light coming on would scare the coyote away, but it certainly would alert someone that there's something moving in your backyard. So, that seems to work.
Light and noise are your friends when it comes to dealing with it. Unfortunately, somebody mentioned fences. You're absolutely right. A coyote can scale a fence. I've seen videos of them doing it. Then those invisible fences that keep your dog in your yard, that's all well and good, but you can't just put them outside and go back inside and watch the nightly news because there's nothing keeping the predators out of your yard. So go outside with your animals, keep them close to you, turn on lights, carry a flashlight, make lots of noise. That's the best answer I have, and I'm sure it's not what everyone in this room wants to hear, but it's what I have to offer today.
Thank you. Thanks.
You start a question. I'll let you ask the question you started to ask because we're really not supposed to entertain from the audience, but you start. So go ahead.
I was talking about small dogs. My dog is not a small dog. It weighs over 50 pounds, and the coyote did start to run after the dog. And the dog was not on a leash because I don't think it's fair to have to put my dog on a leash in my yard. I've never done it for 70 years for a coyote.
Okay. Okay, some things, too. I've done some research, and I reached out to a friend of mine. I live in the north end of town, and coyotes have always been sort of, you're used to them up there, but there's woods behind my house. And now, you know, my neighbor showed me the picture of the bear in her yard a few days ago, so. And now I've, we took a call today about bobcat up in the north end of town. So I'm sure, you know, the wildlife is there. But some of the things I, a friend of mine who's a retired DEEP officer, I worked with him when I was a trooper, said that the late winter timeframe is a good time to try and find out when they're starting to build dens and so forth. Like there's an abandoned house on Smith Street. You've probably seen me walk down there with my grandson. He's always going down to the beach, the little beach he calls it, at the end of Smith Street. And of course, we're always watching, too. But that house is, taxes are always paid on it, so it's not abandoned. But we've reached out to the owner, sent a letter saying that we think they've been, not in the house, but they like to den up, and I saw they like to, they'll find abandoned foxholes or anything that they can den up in. So the thing to do is possibly next year, if we can get that individual's permission, to be proactive in that area to do that. I mean, little thing, it just, because the best way to do it is if we can avoid, you know, the, he said, find what the early signs are in the late winter, early, basically late winter, when they're starting to look for places to, and they're very monogamous. It's usually a male and a female that get together and stay together forever and have pups anywhere from, you know, six to 12. And then the early fall is when they'll start to disperse and so forth. But he did say they're very territorial. If you get rid of them, you have to be vigilant for someone coming in to fill that void because we, it's sort of like you think you've got, you know, you've just got these few, one mouse in your house. Nobody has one mouse. They have quite a few. But those are some of the things he said, looking at the prevention, because, you know, we could possibly have some more companies come in for the trappers. But as he said, there's only one thing they can do, if they trap them. And, you know, and I, we do hear, I do get calls in the office, yes, but, you know, they're very much opposed to anything like that. So we do hear you. There'll be the presentation on the 28th, and I think the, you know, it does give us an idea of where we have to go. Right now, we're kind of, the police can't come down and ... come down and remove the problem just because it's there. And here again, too, for a whole lot of reasons, because as he said, if you try to euthanize it, it could be, you know, a bullet doesn't stop when it hits the deer. It could go in a whole lot of others. But we have heard you, and like I said, my son lives at 33 Smith Street. So, you know, every morning, they'd see it come underneath the fence by the guard camp and off down, and then go back with something in his mouth, so taking food back home. So please come to the one on the 28th, because we'll have someone here who's a much, a better expert in it, and we'll see what we can do to have some companies come in that might do some trapping. So, Rob, thank you so much, and thank you all for taking the time to come here tonight and area concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the real exciting rest of the meeting, but thank you for coming. Yeah, I just wanted to get this, because I did say after the consent. Yes, sir?
Is there time to ask further questions at the end?
We can't really respond to the questions during the meeting, but if you'd like to give the office a call, I'd be happy to meet with you.
Yeah, I'm just, the first time I've attended, just curious as to what the town has in place. I guess what's our plan right now? Where we go?
Well, we're waiting for everybody to filter out. Right now, we'll have to discuss that with DEEP and so forth like that, too, because we have to make sure whatever we do, we have the authority to do. A coyote just coming down the road that's not anybody's property, that's not really something we're going to trap or anything like that.
No, I fully understand that.
But if you have something on your property that's a nuisance, or you're, but if it's on your suit, I think we could probably get some more information on companies to call and so forth like that. Yeah.
I guess my specific question, does the town have any plan of place out right now other than the DEEP, but is this the office?
No. No, we don't. Like I said, this is new to us. I mean, because usually, usually they're in the north end of town. I mean, I was, I'm used to it, but this is a much more urban area.
I grew up in Waterford, more in the woods a little bit than we have all the time.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a big deal, but, I mean, I saw one get in line, dairy thing.
Oh, no, yeah. Little boy or girl?
Oh, son.
How big?
Six pounds, 13 ounces.
Excellent, excellent. Everybody's good?
Yeah, I just have to protect all six pounds, 13 ounces.
Yeah, but tomorrow, he's going to be 18, heading off to college, so.
That's true.
It goes that fast, so. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest.
Okay, we're going to move back. I skipped over things to get to this. If we could go back, we need to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 1st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved. Moved to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 1st, 2022.
Okay, so second?
Second.
Seconded. Any questions?
I have a couple of corrections, actually. Page one of the minutes, motion four, I believe it should just read that I move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of June 1st, 2022. I think there's excess language in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we can delete that.
Consent for the, yeah, yeah.
And a second correction would be page three, bottom of, very bottom of that page, where it says 2G. I believe that date should be July 6. The town meeting, which is happening right now, is scheduled for July 6.
I think you're right.
Okay. And then the third one I had was page five, a little bit lower than middle of the page, where the first selectman is giving his report, and it says, as noted by Attorney O'Connell earlier in the meeting, a total of 15% of electorates are required to vote in order to change the charter. So this may be, and I think just the word "an" issue, because the issue had to do with the low turnout for the referendum in the pre-sitting sentence.
That would make sense.
Okay. And that was all that I had.
Okay, is, okay, is a mover and a second are good with the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carries unanimously. Okay, is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2022?
Yes, I move to approve the special meeting minutes of June 23, 2022.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any comments, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the consent calendar.
We have to approve all items on the consent calendar for July 6, 2022.
Okay, and the amount of that is $561.33.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. The next item on the, as we said, we've done item two of the animal control. And thanks to everybody that came out to speak tonight, and their concerns, and show their support for those that are feeling, for their concerns. This is amendment to the solid waste ordinance, and we need to go through this. And tonight, what we'll be doing is moving to schedule a public hearing on the draft, the revised solid waste ordinance, draft ordinance. It's similar to what we did a few months ago, where we'll move it forward, then there'll be a public hearing at our next meeting on August 3, and then if, after that, we will approve it, as long as there's no comments, and there's no changes that we wish to make. So we've had this. Any comments, or do people want to just take, you know, here again, we're just going to schedule a public hearing. What we can do, though, is on page two, you can see that you, shows that the Town of Eastline Public Works Department fees for disposal of waste items, that we could move tonight.
Okay.
Although it shows effective date, 4/22/21, my recommendation, that should read 0801/2022.
Mr. McGraw, oh, Mr. McGaw is with us this evening, and I wonder if he might want to point out a couple of highlights to us?
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so this is a two-part, and obviously, the solid waste ordinance is something that has to go through the public hearing, so I understand that. Although I did give you guys not only the proposed changes on that, but I did give you the track changes, so you can see the difference. So we can discuss that after the public hearing. As far as revised fees, one of the things, when people go to the transfer station, they dump off the bulky waste and things like that. All those costs are going through the roof, and I think the town should consider them as user fees. People dropping stuff off, and there's a cost for us to tip, the tipping fee at Willamette Waste, and also the transportation fee. We bring as many of those loads as we can up with our haul truck that was purchased by the town a few years ago, but the number, I mean, I want to say, between recycling and bulky waste, we have like 400 poles up to Willamette a year, so it's impossible to keep it up with just one, our one truck. So I mentioned in here, the tipping fee got, they gave us notification that they're raising the tipping fee 13% this month, but the transportation cost's going up 54%. So I take the amount of an average load and so with that. So right now, we've been charging people $7, 7.6 cents for, per pound for bulky waste, and I'm proposing to bump it up to 9, 9.45 cents. It seems like a lot, but that would then cover the cost, so the town isn't losing money on that operation. It's not, we're not, it's not a moneymaker, per se. You do see the bulky waste revenue show, rise. It's not because more bulky waste is going up, is that we're charging more, which tries to keep up. That's a kind of offsetting of a cost. The other one, dismantling items, we try to kind of frown upon. It takes a lot to knock, you know, someone comes up with a 20-foot boat, hey, drop it off, and not only are we paying the tipping fee, but it's just sitting there, and we have to knock it down the amount of time. So we're trying to put a cost to that. So I'm proposing raising that from $75 to $100 for one of those items. The other is the bulky waste curbside pickup is very popular, and it's going to be more popular if our fees are down, because you can put five items out. You're not paying for the bulky waste cost in that thing. It's been so, and also for the cost of gas, bringing two guys, because most of the time, the stuff's really heavy that they're dropping off, or else they bring it themselves. So we're trying to bump that from, up to five items, from $50 to $75, and up to 10 items to $125. So last time, it was basically double. We're giving a little discount if someone has seven or eight items, but this, this again, is not a moneymaker. It's a nice service we do. If they, if they had a local contractor, they'd probably charge a lot more, but people do use the service a lot. It's a revenue that line that goes, and kind of offsets expenses. So that's what we're proposing. The last item here, the residential is obviously included in taxes, but the commercial, all the dumpsters, it's that main company, you see those trucks, CWPM, that drive around town, there's an all-waste. They pick up, so say, it's a commercial business, they pick up their trash in the dumpster. They go up to Lisbon, which is where all our trash goes, and they say they're from Eastline. They dump, say it's 20 tons or whatever. They send, they charge us for it. The tipping fee, SCARA would charge, but we charge, we charge those companies back, and we usually have a few dollars spread on that because of administrative and just because of, that's what the towns have been doing. And SCARA's tipping fee is going up a dollar this year, so I'm proposing to keep up with that and go up a dollar. So that's the proposed fees that we're looking in. I would propose, I don't know where you have, where it says, or maybe it was on that thing, April.
Yes.
But I'll propose, oh, yeah, because I took that. That was when we last did these.
Right.
I'm proposing the fees effective August 1st.
August 1st.
Which would actually give everyone a big grand finale of bulky waste on July, because we do, we do bulky waste pickups on the 4th Wednesday of the month. We used to do it all month long. You're chasing people. Now we do it one day a month. You know, there might be 15 loads. We send out the cavalry to go out and pick them all up, and they're done by noon. And then we don't have to wait for, worry about it for a month, and it seems to work out for everyone. So if we do it by April 1st, excuse me, August 1st, then it won't kick in until the August pickup.
Could we go back to the commercial companies that pick up and take, is there some, because that means extra work for the town. Is there some reason they can't be paid, they can't pay directly?
That's how SCARA does it, because Lisbon, the wheel brander plant has, has, their agreement is with all the 13 towns in SCARA. They don't care about CWPM or all waste. They say, they charge us, and then we have to deal with charging the vendor for our residents, because it's basically our businesses. So that's just the way SCARA works. SCARA's a phenomenal deal for the town, but that's how, that's how the billing works. So that's why we charge a spread, as most towns. And I've tried to get our charge to be similar to other towns, because in the past, if our, if our, if our tipping fee for commercial is like $3 less than, say, Waterford, you could run the risk of the company saying they're from Eastline instead of Waterford, because there's no one checking. So if our rates are all about the same as all our neighbors' towns, then there's no, there's no benefit for them to say they're from Eastline or Waterford. They just say they're from Eastline.
Well, that was my point, to have them pay directly.
But, yeah, but they can't pay directly. They, we, we have to bill them. That's just the way it's set up, because the waste plant does not have agreement with the commercial hauls. They have an agreement with the towns. There's nothing I can do about that.
Before we move on to the ordinance that you're going to do, and, because you went through this with town attorney and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
But I thought we could take action on the.
Yeah, the fees would be.
The fees, do that one first, and then, then.
I mean, it behooves the town to do it, because otherwise, we're going to start losing money.
I like that.
Okay, move to approve the Town of Eastline Public Works Department revised fees for disposal of waste items, fees effective August 1st, 2022.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carries unanimously. Joe, thank you for, you know, you've been updating us on a regular basis, too, so we don't fall way behind. And I don't know if you, I don't think, do you ever take any complaints up there for our fees? I mean, we never get any calls or anything, so.
No, I think it's a pretty good service, because you can go there and dump all your stuff and be done with it. So it's pretty reasonable, I think.
Okay. Did you want to go through the highlights of the, and then anybody that had any questions after Joe?
On the ordinance document, I know there's been a lot at this meeting, so I don't want to bog it down, but I'm kind of going to more to the track changes. I appreciate that this board's idea about, because we, just so everyone knows, we originally tried to propose a policy, and then the suggestion was to go back, because there was a lot of things that were outdated by this ordinance. So it was really good to go through it anyways. But I did incorporate all the stuff about the can pickup and as far as what the charges for the cans are, because one of the things that I get a lot from residents is they like, well, I pay taxes. You have to give me a can. You have to do this. Part of taxes is the cost of the garbage. The, how we do it and how you put the can out is what the town has to tell them, so that we can effectively do the job. So this helps us effectively, so we're not running around the town. We have a collection schedule. One of the things in here that gives us a little bite is that there are a lot of, so we had a few communities in Gateway, Rockinack Village, they're coming to town, and they want all these cans in these little condo places, and we're trying to put a stop to that, because that's really meant for dumpsters. That's what it always meant. So this really backs it up. Now, the, because it says we're not growing the garbage service in private developments. If it's a town road, fine. If it's an existing, like you got the Chapman Woods, you have, there's a list of about 12 private roads in town, that we're not saying we're going to stop doing that, but we have to do it on our terms. So after this document, we'd like to go to the Chapman Woods, the Chapman Farms, the Whiting Farms, and say, I mean, we're entering into private property. We need permission. We need to know who the owner is. We need to have the liability, the hold harmless, all that kind of stuff. We already had, we've done it with a few, we did it with Sea Spray condos up off of Liberty Way, Freedom Way. I mean, we go in there, and the condos, because we had been, but we got agreement with it. We're not growing the service. We only deal with the homeowners association. We only put the cans on one side, so we go in and out. We're not even, we're not even responsible for plowing it, or for potholes, or for trees. So if they don't plow it in the winter, we're out of there. We're not going in. So we have to have those terms. So one of the things in here, it helps us in all these private developments that we don't maintain, that, you know, if you don't do these things, then we're not doing the service. And right now, that's not out there, and we kind of get a, well, you have to do it. So that's the main, you know.
I don't know where, when this started, but when these developments began to come in and do roads that were allowed to do roads that were not standard with the town, they were told garbage collection would not be provided. These were private roads. And I don't know why, all of a sudden, probably since, probably before your tenure, all of a sudden, those services are being delivered to them.
Yeah, it was before my tenure. We haven't started on any roads in town, and we fought some of the developments that come in and say, no, you have to do garbage service. And to this day, Gateway, the new, the Gateway Phase 1, Phase 2, Rockinack Village, we do not pick up there. We haven't been adding, but sometimes we get, and especially some of these developments, and, you know, they last for an extra 40 cans. I mean, 40 cans is $4,000 with the cans, and probably, you know, $10,000 with the garbage in here. So that wasn't the intention. Their intention was for them to have dumpsters. So, and even with businesses in town, we, I think we've been very generous. If you go downtown on Tuesdays, you see all the cans out. We allow them to get town cans, but now we're limited to two, two cans. If you need more than two cans, then you probably shouldn't have a dumpster. And you have to roll it out. You have to play by the rules. You have to space them four feet apart. You have to do all those things. So, and that's all incorporated as the highlights into this document. And I think it reads a lot better, and it cleaned up a lot of the things that just weren't, weren't accurate. It also addresses in here to the, you know, we, sometimes we get to complain about the person that leaves a can out seven days a week. That's addressed in here, but it's nailed down a little bit. So it's, you know, it's no, it's no earlier than the night before, and no later than, you know, dusk of day. So, so that those cans aren't out all, because then they become a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Okay, questions on the ordinance, or any that would like to bring to Joe's attention? Any?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, and let us know where.
Yeah, let's see, section 5112.
Are you, are you looking at?
And I'm just looking at the clean copy.
In what section, 51 what?
51.12.
Okay.
On refusal, suspension of license. So I'm not exactly clear. So if, if, and it's probably in here. When I got to this, I was getting more tired reading it, but. in here. When I got to this, I was getting more tired reading it, but, but if the license is suspended, then where do you, where does the town swoop in, if at all, to pick up?
So when we talk about licenses, we're talking about commercial hauler licenses.
Right.
So if they basically are problematic, or they're not paying their, because they have to pay a license to pick up in town. It's $100 a truck. So CWPM, if they have, it's a maximum, and that's another fee that you guys approved, that I haven't changed here, but a commercial hauler has to register their trucks by license plate or whatever, so that when they're licensed, when they go to the Lisbon plant, they have a license to say that they're from East Lime. And so if they do, if they don't pay their bills to us, back to Roseanne's question of why we haven't charged them, if we're getting this bill, and they don't pay it in a timely fashion, we can revoke their license, so they can't dump on behalf of East Lime anymore. It hurts our businesses, but they just can get a different hauler. So that's the revoke, the revocation, revoking the license
Okay.
Is for commercial haulers, has nothing to do with residential.
Sure. So, so in other words, then, so the option, so you, the town won't assume any responsibility there? It will direct them, direct a business to another hauler?
Correct. Yeah, so if, if someone has, has an agreement, Dairy Queen has an agreement with CWPM, and we revoke their license, Dairy Queen calls up, as we said, there's other haulers, these are the other people that have licenses, call them.
All right. So that was basically my question, just because I was wondering how you avoid the mess that happens when, you know, the hauler's license has been yanked, and
Yeah, we're there to support our businesses.
To pick up.
And we're not there for the haulers, we're there for our businesses. So we will help the businesses find someone else.
Got you. Okay. All right. I'll reread that section. All right.
Add a couple.
Sure.
Did you think about sunsetting the private roads that you pick up on now?
Oh, I did.
Because that's what I, I mean, initially, I was going to ask if you, I mean, I did before, ask if, if there's a development that has state-sized, I guess it's state has the regulations for roads and all that kind of stuff, so it wouldn't impact you picking it up. It would be just like a town road, it's just a private road. But then that sounds like a lot of work for you to go out there and start measuring roads and stuff.
Example, Chapman Woods, Chapman Farms. Have you been up there? It's impossible to get a 40-foot truck through there.
And that's my point.
And it's somewhat difficult for our drivers, and now add, if it's in the wintertime and it's plowing, where, you know, you have, so it's very challenging. But if the board wants to work, I mean, the amount of calls I would get from those, that I would go to this board and say, this board said that we're doing this. But part of this reason is I think people think that our department's making stuff up, and I'm going to the policy board of this town to say, they back us up on this policy. That's why I originally said it's policy, but now the fact it's ordinance is even so. Yeah, we have thought of that. It's just, that's a big, I mean, honestly, I don't have the list exactly. There's probably about 15 different roads that we go down to that are, that are not town roads. And it's a challenge.
Yeah, I'm just wrestling the new private roads versus the old private roads, and it was grandfather son's that, which one do you do to try to keep everybody even?
So where we drew the line, it says it right in here, you have to find, is we're not growing the service. You know, at Sea Spray, when they ask for an extra 20 cans, we're not growing the service. At some of these other places, we're not adding to this. We're letting, we're getting by with what you had in the past, we're not growing it. And that says it right in here. It's actually one of the big parts of this agreement, is we're not growing the service.
So in that same section, 06D, it says the town has no intention of expanding excursion collection service on private roads that it has been collecting for up to, does it say not been collecting? Is not been collecting?
There's no intention of expanding excursion, that is, no, so that's, the way it's written, it has been collecting. So say Chapman Farms has an extension, there's another 10 buildings going, I don't know if they can zonitize, but say they add 10 more buildings, we're not picking up for them, they have to get a dumpster.
Okay, so this is saying a development that you're already picking on, if they expand, you're not going to expand with them. Okay.
Correct.
You got it. Oh, good point, Bill.
Well, somewhere along the line, this was changed, because I specifically remember when those developments came in, and they were allowed to have narrow roads that were not standard size. The deal was that these were private roads, and that would, pickup would not be provided for them.
The pickup was done before my time, and it was very hard to yank it. And I will certainly, if I have some people to support me, I will certainly, we can certainly think about that. But this policy protects the status quo, but does not grow the status quo. And that sometimes is more palatable than taking on the fight, but we certainly can do that, because there will be a big cost to those associations to have then a dumpster, and all those people that, I mean, because a lot of unfortunate spinnakers and all the, all these things are age-assisted living with the seniors and stuff like that, that want their can 20 feet from their house, as opposed to walking down the street. We have up in Sleepy Hollows, in Sleepy Hollow, in the part, Mr. Pizagui's development up there, those are all private roads. And they've been doing, when they build a new road, people are moving in before the road's done. So we've been, and I worked with the first allotment on that, the people wanted service the day they moved in. I mean, there's 10 cement trucks, there's a binder, and like, we're not doing it. And I got a lot of calls, and they go right to the first allotment and say,
We both get a lot of calls.
Thou shall pick up my trash on paying taxes. And this is say, thou shalt put eight generic cans at the end of the road, and we're not going up your street, and that's what we've been doing.
Yeah, that's what they're
And we take, I mean, it's actually like the police get speeding calls, ours are garbage calls, like 80% of our calls every day about garbage. So this kind of narrows it in. If you don't put your garbage out, like our, all our trucks have cameras on them. If someone's can is parked next, is put right next to a car, if you have styrofoam sticking and you're recycling, they take a picture of the can, it's just unacceptable. It gets emailed to the office. The person says, why didn't you pick up a can? We have the picture of it. You have this in your can. Because, and that helps us, because people are irate that their can isn't picked up. But we can't, we can't pick up unacceptable stuff, and we, we have to, you know, our routes are too big to just sit there and go run, run around all around town, especially at, you know, $5 a gallon gas to, to diesel, to be bouncing all over the place. We have to have a systematic route to go around town.
Okay. Any other comments on the revision?
No, I'd just like to thank you very much for the effort that you put into this.
Thank you.
It's very clearly laid out, and I know that it took a lot of time to do this.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next thing would be to move to schedule a public hearing, so you have the
Right, so, yes, okay, so notices hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, August 3, 2022, at the East Line Town Hall at 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, beginning at 7:00 PM, to receive comments regarding amendments to the following ordinance entitled Ordinance Regulating the Storage, Collection, and Disposal of Solid Waste. Said ordinance proposes amendments to Chapter 151.
151.
To 151.
No, just regular 151.
Ah, error in the printing here. Said ordinance proposes amendments to Chapter 51. Ordinance regulating the storage, collection, and disposal of solid waste, which was last amended by the East Line Board of Selectmen on June 3, 2020. Copies of the proposed ordinance regulating the storage, collection, and disposal of solid waste with the proposed amendments, redlined, are available for review in the East Line Town Clerk's Office and on the Town of East Line's website at www.eeltownhall.com. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at East Line, Connecticut, on the 6th day of July 2022, East Line Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying?
There were, there were some suggestions made this evening. Those suggestions can be included?
Yes.
In this? Okay. That's it?
Okay. All those in favor of the public hearing, of motion, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, there's a couple typos in that. Sandy was out today, so I was the one making corrections today, and the only way I could do it was pen and ink it. So I'm sorry, there's just a couple little things here, but
Thank you, thanks.
It was tough today. Okay. Moving on, this is to amend the capital improvement plan, $20,000 to include electronic access gate at Field Services Building, A Capital Drive. Joe, that's you as well, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we have the budget process, and then we have life, and after the budget process, as everyone knows, and, I mean, it went, it worked out well at the end, but we had someone come in our Field Services Building and come on three separate occasions. They smiled for the camera, because they were looking right at our nice cameras, but they stole our chipper and some other equipment. So if you've ever been in that facility, that's where the main fueling station is. So the police are constantly coming in, the fire departments, everyone's coming in there. However, it really, there's one access point right in front of the, on Capital Drive that's completely open, and the back gate is a swing gate. But so what we're proposing is kind of the most prudent thing with our, with current, just in general, is once we had an incident, is to try to secure our facility, is to try to put a locking gate where the police and everyone else could come up. And it's like, it would have a ped post where you go in and put your ID or the code, and so that, and the gate would open, and you could come in and fuel up, and people could come in after hours. So that all happened after that. So with American Rescue Fund, we did the roofs here. So that was on LoCIP, and we switched it to American Rescue Fund. So we have extra money in LoCIP to be able to absorb the cost of this. So we're not asking for any more money. But the problem with LoCIP, if you want to call it that, is you have to certify, it's a part of your capital plan. And we, it wasn't in our capital plan, so that's why Anna helped put this together. It's a two-part, one is to, for the special appropriation for the $20,000, that would have to go through Board of Finance and a town meeting. But the other more important part is to, is included, is part of the capital plan, so that when we serve it off as a LoCIP, it's actually on our capital plan. So that's the two parts of this.
No, you explained it really good. Any, Anna, why don't you give us a, put forth the motion, then we can discuss it.
Sure. First motion, move to approve adding the Public Works Project Access Gate at Field Services Facility in the amount of $20,000 to Public Works Department 317, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This will increase the department project total from $1,885,000 to $1,905,000. It increases total projects from $5,73,081 to $5,93,081. It increases LoCIP projects from $165,000 to $185,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roseanne. Any further questions for Joe, or Anna, or anyone?
So this is, this equipment is available, that once this is approved, it could be installed immediately?
Well, it's available. I mean, nothing's immediate, but yes, it shouldn't take very long. I didn't get the exact lead time, but this is not a year lead out. It's when we give the PO, they should order their equipment. It'd probably take about a month or so.
So there's no supply chain issues that you know of?
Not that I'm aware, they didn't tell us, and we got multiple posts on this, so we went through the procurement process.
Not, not today, but tomorrow.
Not that we've been told.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie unanimously.
So they, did you do, did you vote on both, the adding to capital?
No, we still have the other, the other half, yeah.
We still have to appropriate as a LoCIP.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now comes, now comes a part that requires a town meeting.
Right, okay. Move to approve a special appropriation in CNRE Fund 32, in the amount of $20,000 for an electronic gate system at Field Services FSB facility, with the source of funds being the LoCIP program, to an account to be established with the state project number, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Okay, move. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second. Any further comments? I think we've talked about this. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, the next item, setting up a special appropriation for the Route 161 Corridor Study Grant. This goes back to February of 2021. The Southeastern Connecticut Council Governments received federal funds through Connecticut DOT for the Route 161 Corridor Study, and we were approved $250,000 for East Lime, and required to contribute 10% matching funds. The time the board is like, here again, they submitted a letter of commitment, the project is ready to move forward, and therefore we need to go through the appropriation process. Anna, correct me, the money is already there, correct, for the $25,000?
It's in us. We're transferring it.
We're transferring, yeah. Yeah, and to, this is, this is not the 161 Corridor Survey, Study for where the 74, 161 interchange. This will be for moving ahead, because once that's completed, there'll be a upgrade to 161 from Industrial Park Road to 156, all the way down. So this is just moving to that. This is the one where they hope to put sidewalks all the way down, and widen the road, and, you know, so forth as time goes on. So that's what this is for.
Okay. All right. I'll move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $25,000 from CNRE Fund 32, Account 32-70-300-500-999, parentheses, Townwide Projects, to an account to be established titled Route 161 Corridor Study, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments?
That's the question about timing. How long, is there a time for how long this is supposed to take, or?
They're going to start probably, the, as far as the study part of it, they're going to probably start late next spring or next summer timeframe. And again, that's just going to be a study. It'll be a while before they come up with what the plan is to actually move forward is. So it would probably be three to four years before they actually start doing something.
So it's going to start in a year, and then three or four years after that, it's going to be done?
Well, probably about three or four years.
Two or three years.
Yeah, but it'll start. That's it for right now.
Okay.
And don't forget, the interchange was supposed to start a year ago, so.
And the fence is supposed to be changed down, but never mind.
Yeah. So anyway.
That's all, that's my last question.
Okay.
So we still need to vote on that.
Oh, all those in favor, I'm sorry, thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie unanimously. Thank you for keeping me on track, Anna. Okay, moving on. This is next for realty funds for the Board of Med CNRE account for the East Line High School Energy Savings Institute, $25,100. Ms. Patiano, our Assistant Superintendent is here to speak to us tonight.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Anna Lys.
Yeah, so this is, I'm obviously here speaking on behalf of Dr. Lund, who was unable to be here this evening. But this first item is really to replace a domestic hot water tank at the high school that's original to the building. So.
Yeah, and the initial, it should, it talks about it in here, the initial hope was to do this with natural gas, but because of the cost of natural gas, it's been determined that this would be a much better expenditure at this point in time. So that's what the request is for here. So, and if you want to move that, and then if there's any questions for Anna Lys?
Sure. Okay, move to approve reallocation of CNRE Fund 32, Account 32-99-500-369, parentheses, BOE, ELHS Energy Savings Initiatives, $25,100 of FY21 SIP from its original intended use of ELHS/ELMS LED lighting to replace the domestic hot water storage tank at the high school, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. Is there any questions for Anna Lys?
So this money was destined to, originally for the lighting, improved lighting?
I believe so.
Okay. So I just saw in the paper a few days ago that there's new grant money becoming available for lighting, such as that. And so perhaps, I don't remember which section of the paper that it was in, but it's possible that you might be able to get some of that money for that purpose.
Can certainly look into it and pass that along to Dr. Lund, for sure.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie unanimously. The next one is the CNRE Fund 32, the Board of Ed Pool Roof Reserve, request for $17,000, $1,800. Anna Lys?
So this is really to move forward with the repairs to the roof that are in desperate need of, you know, work. So this is, you know, to support that ongoing and future repair effort.
Okay, let's, if there are any questions?
Okay, sure. Move to approve a special appropriation of $17,800, CNRE Account 32-99-094-900- Sure. Move to approve a special appropriation of $17,800, CNRE Account 32-99-094-900-001[601.02][601.02](ELHS Pool Roof Reserve) for roof repair professional services at the East Lime Schools Aquatic Center and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And Anna Lys or Mariana, this is money that's already in that account, correct? We're just taking it out?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Anna?
Yeah, so this is not actually to do the work. This is to send it out to bid and get contractors and decide who's going to actually do the work. Is that what this is for?
Well, let me take a better look. I have it pulled up here.
That's what I understood.
Yes, I understood too.
Yep, so it's for aquatic center roof investigation.
Right.
Yep.
I think it, I think you've had that investigation. You had some selected demolition and repair, some options with cost estimates that you provided us. And I think this one is repair design and then bidding, you know, doing the bid documents, right? And then, and then, Anna Lys, I think construction administration.
That's right. So there's two tasks, documentation and bidding and construction and administration.
But it's not actually doing the actual work.
Correct.
No.
Okay.
So, any other, Bill, did you have your hand up?
Is this still for the corrosion on the inside or is this for the outside?
This is for the inside.
This is the corrosion because it didn't have the right dehumidifier and all that? Yeah, okay. That's a problem all day in the land.
I was just wondering, Anna Lys or Mariana, if, sort of to dovetail on Bill's question, what the feeling was? Because there was a couple of proposals, you know, for different approaches. So is there any feeling on that? I mean, the Tecton Architects, Architectural Firm gave you the information and some suggestions. So is there any, I didn't know if Chris isn't here, Chris Lund, but is there any direction that you're headed in? There was a couple of ways of solving the issue.
I did not confirm that with him before he left for vacation. So I wouldn't want to say one way or the other, but I can certainly have him circle back around with you and let you know what direction they're thinking about going in.
Because there's a, you know, there's a price differential.
There were, it was really about, you know, that connection to the upper portion of the roof. And there was two ways of doing it, coming from the outside or connecting from the inside.
Right.
So I know exactly what you're referring to.
Yeah.
But I can't say, I don't want to speak on Dr. Lund's behalf and misspeak.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anna Lys and Mariana. And for having to stay for the.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, have a good evening. Moving on, this is the payment to Flanagan Associates for the appraisal for the Hathaway Farms. And we held off to find out where we could, you know, trying to find how to fund it as the year came to an end. So we have, as you can see, we have a good balance remaining in the contingency. So Anna did some research and figured that'd be the best place to go. So we just need to move that.
Okay, move to authorize the expenditure in the amount of $4,800 from Account Number 01-01-120-200-500 (contingency) for the invoice from Flanagan Associates for appraisal services rendered for property located on Hathaway Road, East Lime, Connecticut for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022 and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Moving on, the last things are, we have a few appointments to boards and commissions. Again, this is the substitute admin assistant doing it today as I was getting them ready. So the first one, and I included with Margaret Hughes, her background as well, since that's the only one that's basically brand new.
Okay. Move to appoint Margaret C. Hughes of 5 Red Fox Road, East Lime, Connecticut to serve as a member of the Commission on Aging with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Roseanne, it's a full commission now. You got everybody neat. Moving on to the next, for Bill Bundy, who we brought in as an interim, I think anyone can attest, we've had nothing but extreme complimentary comments regarding his performance, not only from him, but working with the town agencies as well. We've had several emails saying thank you for all he's done. So this is a first selectman appointment, according to that. But I'd like to make sure it's basically voted on and acted by the full board. So anyway.
Move to appoint William J. Bundy III of Lebanon, Connecticut, as the East Lime Fire Marshal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Dave Hausman and Roseanne, you would know this, has in the past been a fire marshal, for us a deputy fire marshal, done a lot of work with us. And Bill Bundy has asked, he would be a great asset to him now, especially and is able to be as an investigator. So he's asked for him to be reappointed.
I concur.
Okay.
Move to appoint David Hausman Jr. of 474 Laurel Hill Road, Norwich, Connecticut, as a deputy fire marshal with the Town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roseanne. Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. The last one.
Okay, move to appoint Brian Burridge of 476 Boston Post Road, East Lime, Connecticut, as the Veterans Representative for the Town of East Lime with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, is there any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. It's been a long meeting, so I'll just briefly touch on charter revision process. I have forwarded everybody the, a lot of the information on the charter as well as the charge for it as well, too. I talked to Ed O'Connell and Tracy, and they said they would think September would be the better time to appoint the committee because the early part of August, you're talking about the prime vacation time of the year. It gets back to where people are back and it gets a better thing. So at the next one, we'll want to discuss how many members, anywhere from five to 15 would like to be on it, and possibly some names and so forth like that for the next meeting. So that's the only update there. And the town clerk does have, there's a little, in the vault, the past charter revisions and the minutes for the meetings are in there. So they're very accessible if you wanted to come in and take a look at those. So I tried to send you just the last one because, you know, I'd still be making copies right now, otherwise. So.
So were you thinking of this for the first meeting of August?
No, just to talk further about, you know, whether, how many, not, the charge itself will be in September, but just a discussion as to numbers of people we want to have in the commission and, you know, possibly, you know, some names and so forth. As, we're only allowed, if we so choose, to have three elected members of the Board of Commission to serve on it. And all the requirements for minority representation are in place, too, and so forth like that.
And I believe that when I served on the previous ones, it was ex officio from the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, there was.
And so at the press, I'm just going to go on the record right now and say that I am not in favor at this time of this. I would like to see a survey done, put out to the community at the next election for the people in town who are interested enough to go and vote, a survey on what the issues they are concerned about, and whether or not we see that there really is a lot of interest in this. It's extremely time consuming, and it's also expensive. So I'm just going to state that that's my opinion at this time.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, ex officio reports. Bill, start with you at this end this time.
Okay. I went to the first June Board of Ed meeting. Lot of student comments about middle school sports. We had the conversation about the ex officios, the meeting before that here, and the Board of Ed said that they, they don't want the ex officios in the executive sessions. So I think that's something that we all have to understand, that there's some conflict between, I guess we're allowed to be there, but we don't have to be there. Is that the final answer?
Yeah, it's.
So if they don't want us, then they have the right to say no.
That's, I don't believe that's correct.
No, I talked to Tom Hennick, and Tom Hennick said that, no, they, who's obviously FOI, and, you know, the person that is in the body that makes the decision, he said ex officios are allowed into executive session. I talked to Jeff Newton, and he said they spoke with their board council, and they said, no, they are not. So they're going on the advice with their board council.
Well, then I think that the Board of Selectmen and our charter, our job description overrules that. Ex officios have the right to attend. They do not have the right to vote. They have the right to attend and to participate. I'd like a ruling on that from our town council.
Okay, I'd prefer to get the ruling from Tom Hennick from FOI itself because I think that would be the, if we'd like to do that, then we would have a definitive from the source.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to him.
So I just, yeah, that's, I just wanted to have that conversation so we can, not everybody get shocked each time that we attend one of those meetings.
Was there a reason why they said they didn't want the ex officios?
They hadn't heard that before. So I asked Jeff, I said, we'll give Kevin a call, and you guys have a conversation about it. So I was okay missing the first meeting, but I just didn't want this to be a recurring issue, right? We march into one set of orders, and they're marching to a different set of orders, so.
Well, if, when we had that Zoom meeting with Tom Hennick, I specifically asked that question, and he said, yes, they are. So.
So as I'm saying, if we can just resolve the conflict one way or the other, then everybody's fat, done, and happy.
Okay.
I'm fatter than others, but that's beside the point. Food service is doing really good. They got extra money. They're going to do some beautification and expand the garden, blah, blah, blah. Field looks like it's got good grass growing on it, but there are actually weeds. They have a water valve that's coming in in September, and then they're going to resurface it and replant it in September. They're going to eliminate cash for tickets, events, bum, bum, bum. Oh, and they'd like to have a representative on the charter revision. I explained to them, it doesn't really work that way. Every board doesn't get a representative, but somebody that's in tune for the Board of Ed issues may be, you know, a dual personality kind of thing. So that's it for the Board of Ed that meeting, the second meeting of the month. I wasn't in town in time. Anna was going to cover, but her daughter had issues, so.
I covered remotely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I did attend this remotely, just not in person.
Thank you. TBC was canceled for lack of corn, but then it was held on the 16th, and they didn't do much other than approve invoices. Planning on the 14th, I have nothing significant. Blah, blah, blah. That's it.
So I attended the Board of Ed meeting on June 20th by remote, and at that point, they did reiterate that they wanted, the Board of Ed wanted a member of the board on the.
Charter revision.
Committee. They asked me to bring that up. They were talking about East Lime's middle school sports, and they reinstated basketball for girls and boys. And that was by a vote of nine to zero. Esteban Garcia was appointed as a new Board of Ed member. Barry Sheckley had resigned due to some personal reasons. And so they appointed Esteban Garcia at that meeting. Let me see. That was the main thing. Okay, so then also, I attended a meeting for the Historic Properties Commission last night on July 5th. They were saying that they were looking for volunteers for the East Lime History Center to start, to start to look at a vision for what the center is going to be. On the Samuel Smith Farmstead, they're going to be starting the roof replacement with ARP fund. So they were extremely excited. Everybody's pumped about that. Also, on the day of East Lime Day, which is July 16th, they're going to have Open Farm Day at Samuel Smith Farmstead from 10 to 3:00. They're going to have horse and pony rides. The local farmers will be there, gardening, gardeners from Nyanic. And the second regiment Dragoons will be there, regiment Dragoons. They also said that on June 11th of 2022, at the Farmstead, they had a vintage tractor and truck show that was a huge success. They had 107 people show up. It was a great turnout. And they were very excited about that.
I went to that. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, they said you were there and Ms. Cheeseman.
That's great.
So that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
That's funny.
Yeah, that's good. I went to a police commission meeting June 9th, and Chief Finkelstein noted that, he's excited that the two dispatchers who will be hired will be starting in July. I think today might have been the last day for applications. So that'll be great for the 24/7 coverage with the two dispatchers. We can look forward to that. School security was not, was and was then taken off the agenda because the commission needed, needs some time itself to meet and discuss. So before, before meeting with Board of Education, and the two, the two commissions, and Board and Commission will, will share ideas. And I, obviously, the Board of Education takes the lead in this, but I think there's going to be some, you know, good exchange of information between, between the two boards. The chief did take the opportunity, even though it wasn't totally on the agenda, to just kind of give a little overview of existing training and skills at issue with active shooters. And I personally was really, you know, very pleased to hear of the skill set, the, you know, amongst our chief himself and two other officers being, you know, instructors, can actually instruct on active shooter scenarios, and the monthly training that all the officers go through on the issue. So, and there's more to come on that. I'm sure that'll be part of conversation going, going forward. Kevin and I went to Water and Sewer on June 28th. Couple of things there, did you want to?
Well, I'll take that.
Yes, yep, that's right, yep. So I think I'm all set. Go ahead.
Dan?
Yes, I attended the Waterford East Lime Shellfish Commission Thursday, on June 16th. And they reported that Save the River, Save the Hills maintains the pump-out boat, takes care of that program in the, in the river. And the boat goes around and pumps out the boats that are stationary there, get rid of the waste so it doesn't end up in the river. And East Lime contributed, they split it in thirds. Walsco contributes 2,500, East Lime 2,500, and Waterford contributes 2,500 to fund that boat program. So they were reporting that they had, I believe, received the funds. And then what else? Oh, they are looking into putting seed clam or oyster in the, in the river so that there'll be more clams and oysters in the future as, after they grow. And apparently, there are a lot of clams out in the river, at least back in a month ago, two weeks ago, for anyone that's interested to get a permit. And they seem to be plentiful, so.
That's good news.
Yeah, so that's, that's the report.
Roseanne?
Commission on Aging, gentleman spoke at that meeting under delegations representing a group of people who would like to see the town develop pickleball fields. He spoke for about 20 minutes and asked for the support of the Commission on Aging in that endeavor as a lot of the people who do participate in that are senior citizens and find it to be a very good, healthy recreation that they're able to, that they're able to do. So that's something that I would suspect will make its way to the Board of Selectmen at some point. From a previous meeting that I forgot to mention, but I guess the problem is solved now, and that is mice invading the vehicles because of where they're parked, over at the emergency management building. And they're parked over by, I guess, the grassy field. They're having quite a bit of problems, quite a few problems with mice being in the vehicles ahead of the drivers showing up to start the vehicles in the morning.
The mice?
Yeah, the mice aren't licensed, so it's a problem.
Well, I guess when the vehicle starts moving and they start running around.
So.
So zoning, nothing particular from zoning at the last meeting. And I think that's all I have for this evening. all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. A few things here, we've gotten, as time is going out, we're getting a little bit more and more information about the Route 6161 exit 74 interchange. I got some information, it's going to have left and right turn lanes, so on both sides of the road, so that'll help it. There'll be five-foot shoulders and sidewalks right in the area. The sidewalks are going to run on the west side of the road, which would be where Stop and Shop is, from Industrial Park Road to the Flanders Four Corners, so it'll be a nice, long stretch there. Demolition, which was supposed to start a month and a half ago, they have moved some equipment in the area, but the problem is they didn't have the utilities disconnected yet. Once the utilities are disconnected, they'll come to us, we have a demo permit ready to go, so we're just waiting on them to say it's done, they'll get the permit and they can start, so that's one of the things, that's the only thing we're waiting for to start there, because we do get calls about the garbage, the grass growing, and so forth like that. Same thing with the driving range, there was some garbage there, but the state finally came and picked that up. The car wash, if you notice, it's a little bit roped off now, the owner has closed on it, they've done some cutting, and I, I didn't see if they cleaned up the garbage in the back, but he said, once they close, they would take care of that, so I'll check to see if the garbage was, but I can see it roped off a little bit. 185 Main Street, which was getting built at record pace, they ran into a little bit of problem, their hope was to be open for the 4th of July, but there's a couple connection boxes that you have to have one or the other from Eversource, that Eversource will approve, and they're apparently very scarce right now, EB can't even get them, so I have a hunch they're a little higher priority. I heard, not from Eric, the, one of the owners or one of the builders over there, but I've heard from Main Street Organization, that they're looking at late August now. So going back to Water and Sewer meeting, Well 5, which was one of the things we used some art money on, that's just about done, should be up very, in operation very soon, which will have a much, it was, have be over several hundred gallons a minute, vice where it was, down to about 100 gallons a minute. The generator will take a little longer to replace, only because the lead time on purchasing it, but the one there does work right now. Water meter project is working on schedule as well, we've got about a third of the houses in town with the new water meter, water meters, and everyone's going to have to have it done sooner or later, it's going much quicker than they thought, and we do get compliments regularly on the people that are in there doing it, constantly getting those, so that was the main things from our Water and Sewer meeting. As you know, Parks and Rec Director is retiring, Dave Putnam, on the 9th of September. He has, they have interviewed five people, three made it to the final interview, which will be being done next week. Finance, Anna is retiring the 2nd, and we've had that posted for about a week and a half, we only have four applicants so far, so if anybody's interested, not there, there's, I know if anyone might be of interest, it's online on the town website, it's on the CCM website, and so forth like that. In the back of the room, of course, Anna, if you could just, we allow even the people to shoot, if you can just shoot to the back of the room.
Let's see.
There is, behind our, there reporter is the equipment for the hybrid, you see the TVs down there, everything that we need to do, it's, well, don't worry about it, it's fine, but they're here, they are due to be installed August 17th, so let's hope for this first meeting in September, we'll be able to be looking at hybrid, and we've also been talking to the school to have someone from up there come down and run that for us, because that'll be a little more labor intensive, and it's, I think it's tough to have a board member trying to participate in a meeting as well as running that type of thing. Onto some positive things, a week ago Monday, I was invited to attend day one at the Coast Guard Academy by Admiral Kelly, it was a very nice event, we have two East Line students, one who's, Bill Derry, who's on the Board of Ed, his son is now sophomore, and I can't remember, we have one student entering this year, too, so East Line is well represented there. Jeannie's out in Water and Sewer, retired and, the other day, of course, she retired on Thursday, and she was back Tuesday, part-time, doing some work, too, so she's doing a little part-time work for a bit. And, Roseanne, the Rock and Roll Car Show Elder's Night back a couple weeks ago was fantastic on Main Street, there was easily 1,000 people there, the merchants said it was a fantastic night, and I know you kind of laid the idea out there, and a lot of people took off around with it, so thank you for your input, our part in that. The art show this past weekend, merchants told me it was one of the ones that had been coming here, said it was fantastic, a lot of people there all weekend, even though Saturday looked bad. This, the 16th is Celebrated Slime Day, so it's the first time in three years, I'm sure we're going to have a really good crowd there. We're having a meeting next Tuesday to finalize the plans, and obviously, you know, safety's a big concern there, so I'll just leave it at that, that is well, well being taken into consideration.
Fireworks?
And there'll be fireworks at 9:00. And the concerts started tonight, Wednesday concerts at the McCooks down at the beach from 6:00 to 8:00, and up at the Band Shell from, I think it's 6:30 to 8:30 on Fridays, starting now through the rest of the summer. That's my report, any questions?
For that 16195, I'm going to call it.
Yeah.
I'm going to call it whatever I'm going to call it, is there going to be some kind of public package out there?
Yeah, there is, we've gotten some information right now, but the thing is, if I, you know, we've, not, it's only enough now to where if I put it out, it would be confusing. There's going to be public hearings this coming fall, which are going to detail where the, and they're going to be, we've already told that we need, want to do it at the high school, there's going to be public hearings where they're going to show people where the detours are going to be, where the road closure is going to be, and when they're going to happen. We know it's going to happen next spring or fall, it will not happen in the summer, so that's the only thing that we know for sure, and August, actually, August, August is when they actually let the contract out for bids, so we'll have a lot more information.
And then all that information will be put out on the website someplace, so.
Yeah, and here again, right now, like I put the information about the, a couple things, like the, oh, the Amtrak fence, you saw I put an update on that, they're going to put a test fence in the area of, someplace in Groton, in the late, in late.
2024.
Yeah, no, late, late fall, early winter, and, you know, I'm not going to put a picture of it, because I, you know, they haven't sent me one, they've been very cooperative, it's their fence to put up, so, you know, I'll wait till they tell me, come down, take a look at it, then we can pass judgment on it then, so, but they, if I text or email Jane Brophy with Amtrak, within a couple hours, I get a response, she's been very good, so, and they said they, they want the town's input before they make a final decision, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is the car wash gone?
No, the car wash is still there, it'll be a while before, he hasn't gotten a demo permit for that yet.
But they're putting in some kind of new state-of-the-art thing there, right?
Yeah, they're going to put a state-of-the-art thing in, which will be, as I said, it'll be able to do 120 cars an hour, the engines will be a little further down Industrial Park Road, so you're not across from the entrance to Stop and Shop, there'll be three lanes, you'll have an app on your phone, they'll have your license plate in their database, it'll read your license plate, the arm goes up, you drive in, and it's done, but no wands, because those are being shown to be not environmentally friendly, because of what people are washing other cars and trailers.
What did you say, no what?
Wands, where you can go into little bays and wash your, wash your own cars.
Well, that's definitely something I'm looking forward to.
Yeah, and then, I think the company, Soapies, it's, I guess, I can't remember, but it's a Connecticut-based company, and I had a really nice meeting with him, so. It is, so. Okay, any public.
140, what'd you say, 140?
120 cars an hour.
What about the water?
It's, it's got to be recycled, too, but this is a, this is a far more environmentally friendly building, too, and it's, yeah, he's, and it was a very, I was at the meeting of Bill, even Phil Mahoney liked it, so, you know, it must be good, so, but he found some, yeah, so it worked good, so.
It's environmentally.
Okay.
Well, we can all be working at the car wash.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, known, will be, need to, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate matters, Hathaway Property, and for personnel matters, the unaffiliated employees compensation. Is there a motion?
Yes, there's a motion to enter into executive session at 9:01 PM.
Okay, a second.
Seconded, all is in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'll.
So, yes, we've returned to the regular meeting at 9:41 PM, and no formal votes were taken in executive session. Okay. And then we need, okay, a motion to approve the unaffiliated employees' compensation as, let me get that language, as amended and discussed in executive session.
A second. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments? One thing is, too, is there's amount of the cost for this, of the spreadsheet that Anna did, that is still below what she had set aside for the unaffiliated, so it, it's still less than was anticipated when she prepared the budget going in, so it doesn't affect that at all.
So we need a second?
Oh, yeah.
We need a second to that motion?
Yeah, a second.
Yeah, I think so.
Second, okay.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, carries 5 to 1. Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, one more motion.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, we're adjourned, thank you.
All right.